Good afternoon and welcome to the Guam Congress Building. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today is Monday, October 7th and the time is 2:10 PM. In compliance with the open government law, notice for this public hearing was published in the Guam Daily Post and posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Monday, September 30 and Friday, October 4, 2024. Notice was also sent by email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. And this hearing is being livestreamed on the legislature's YouTube channel. I ask that all those who are testifying to please begin your testimony by stating your name and if you're representing an organization stating that also for the record, these proceedings will be transcribed. So we have two agenda items today for 2 PM. It's the reappointment of Teresa Demian Borja, DPM, FAC FAS, to serve as a member, Allied Health Professions representative of the Guam Memorial Board of Trustees for a term of six years from date of confirmation. We also have the appointment of Suzanne Di Lobaten, DNP, MNRN, COHNS, to serve as a member, Guam Nursing Association representative of the Guam Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees for a term of six years from date of confirmation. I'd like to acknowledge Senator Telo Taitegui here with me today, Sidozmasi, Senator, for joining me today. The Guam Memorial, I'd also like to recognize the presence of the administrator and CEO of the hospital, Ms. Lillian Posadas, and also their CFO, Yuka Hetchenova. The Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees is composed of 10 members, four representing the general public with experience in healthcare, management, finance, or any other business-related field. Of course, one from the Allied Health Profession, two from Guam Nursing Association, and two members representing Guam Medical Community appointed by the governor. And these all require consent of the legislature or confirmation, so that's why we're here today for this hearing. There's also one member who's president or designee of the Guam Memorial Hospital Volunteers' Association, ex-official member on that Board of Trustees. The Board is liable for the negligent act of any hospital employee or officer if the Board knew or had noticed that said employee or officer was inefficient and incompetent to perform the services for which he was hired, or said Board retained such inefficient or incompetent person after knowledge or notice of such inefficiency or incompetency. No trustee shall be liable for any decision made in good faith, non-malicious fulfillment of his duties. The Board is liable, as fiduciaries, in the execution of their duties. No trustee shall be actively engaged in the selling of services or goods to the hospital without the express approval of the Board of Trustees. No trustee shall act when a conflict of interest occurs. Meetings are held at a regular time and place determined by the Board. Special meetings may be called by the chairperson as often as necessary. They're subject to the open government law. The majority of the members, which is five, constitutes a quorum. Let me rephrase that. A majority of the members constitutes a quorum. Affirmative vote of five is required for any action. The Board members serve for a term of six years. All members of the Board, US citizens or permanent resident aliens, domiciled in Guam for at least three years prior to appointment to the Board. No member can sit on the Board who is an employee of GMH. All right. Well, so we begin with confirmation of Dr. Teresa Demian Borja. This is a reappointment, and I'd ask anyone here to testify on behalf of Dr. Borja to please approach the table. Dr. Borja, if you don't mind sitting in the middle. Lillian? We'll hear from the administrator of GMH first, if you would like to present testimony.
Thank you, Speaker. Good afternoon, Senator Telo Taitegui. On behalf of the Board of Trustees and also of our executive management, I am here to testify in support of Dr. Teresa Borja. She served the remaining term of former trustee, trustee Sarah Nedadok, and since then, she's been very engaged and really just been very active in our meetings. She is also the chairperson for the Subcommittee on Governance, Bylaws and Strategic Planning, has just been very consistent in making the meetings, you know, happen on a monthly basis, on a regular basis, and we just recently reviewed the bylaws of the Board of Trustees. So I, I, I'm very much in support of Dr. Teresa Borja because she is very much engaged and she is a health professional, is very respectful and very diligent in her duty, not only as a physician, but also as a colleague with the nurses. The nurses that work, she works very well with the nurses in terms of the Wound Care Program that we have launched, and so, you know, I urge this committee to then really confirm the appointment of Dr. Teresa Borja. Thank you.
Sidozmasi, Ms. Posadas, CEO, and I'd like to recognize the presence of my colleague, Senator Sueniklis, Senator, Sidozmasi, Senator. Dr. Borja, we can now hear from you. If you have testimony, please proceed.
Thank you. Senator Telo Taitegui and Senator Sinagustin, Siniklis, my apologies, and colleagues, family and friends, I'm here to seek confirmation and reappointment as a member of the Board of Trustees of Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. It has been two years since my last confirmation hearing. The dynamics of the hospital is ever-changing. We are in the thick of things and it's hard to pinpoint what exactly I want to talk about today. We have many capital improvement projects going on, expansion of services and upkeep of the facility. This is all going on all at once. There is nothing too small or too big to take for granted. As Lillian said, the BOT bylaws are updated. We have a new vision statement to reflect the current day GMH. We are working with legal to update our website. Mold mitigation is a daily thing. Updating our IT system is happening. We're trying to also commit the ARPA funding by the end of the year. We task finance to look at our medical services and evaluate cost effectiveness. Administration is also evaluating physician productivity, trying to contain costs and thereby addressing certain specialties that might not be as productive. That is also ongoing. We ask for help where we need it. We look for grants and available funding where we can. Recently, we have a state-of-the-art CT scanner and Angiosuite, open house, but beyond that, beyond the services that we can provide, we have to look towards a future of maintaining it, and that goes along with an electronic health record to support advancing technology. We also have expanded our outpatient services to include pulmonology and GI. What we are faced with is the funding to get these, to keep these outpatient services going because they are a good producer of funds to the hospital, but that is currently at risk, but we will try, as one of our strategic plans, to maintain that for the hospital. It is a very good, it's actually an exceptional service for our patients, especially GI, which is the only one on Guam, and that is huge to have someone out here on Guam for GI. Well, let's put all that aside. We have to also talk about our facility. It has been past the five years of the lifetime that Army Corps of Engineer said we would have on the building. We have to make that last for another five to seven years until hopefully a new hospital is built. We have to harden, they call it harden, our facility against more typhoons. We had a setback last year with Typhoon Mawar. It continues to be a challenge. We will finally look to renovate the maternal baby ward. We've recently got a 2.7 million grant to replace our HVAC system. We are getting funding hopefully to replace our two chillers, or even a third one, a smaller chiller, so three total. And these chillers are very old and we finally have the opportunity to go through the procurement process and get that replaced. So at the hospital itself, you know, sometimes things affect our morale, but I have to tell you, this year we've had such great energy, people doing such amazing things. We have a newsletter to kind of keep us communicating with each other. Information and inspiration is everywhere. Amongst the criticism and harsh rhetoric against GMH, you have doctors, nurses, and support staff that come to work and achieve these awards. If I may just kind of breeze through this real quick. The first one, August 2024, the US News and World Report designated GMH as a high-performing hospital, placing it amongst, among the nation's top hospitals based on performance across medical conditions and procedures, specifically in the treatment of heart attack, heart failure, diabetes, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, and pneumonia. They ranked us within the top 38% of performing hospitals in a study of 4,500 hospitals. In July 2024, GMH achieved the American Heart Association's Get With the Guidelines Resuscitation Bronze Quality Achievement Award for its up-to-date research-based guidelines for treating in-hospital cardiac arrest. In addition to the resuscitation award, GMH also has been honored with the Get With the Guidelines Stroke Gold Quality Achievement Award, recognizing the hospital's commitment to ensuring stroke treatments amongst our patients according to the nationally-recognized research-based guidelines. September 2024, GMHA received the High Quality Innovators Hospital Quality Improvement Contractors' Recognition Program. I had no idea what that was until I read further and found that this award recognizes our commitment to improving, improving quality and safety of healthcare for our patients, providing person-centered equitable care and producing better healthcare outcomes. Finally, the GMHA Authority's Skilled Nursing Unit in Baragata has achieved, has received the Achievement in Quality Award for the Quality Improvement Organizations, a program for Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. So against the criticism of the hospital that we faced almost on a weekly basis, I believe Guam needs to celebrate this. It's very hard to achieve these things. If people would like to criticize us, I would love for them to walk a day in our shoes. You will see the unsung heroes throughout our hospital. The talent, the expertise, and the professionalism is unmatched in the years that I have worked at GMH for the last, I think, 23 years. We experienced firsthand patients saying what great care they received at GMH, but your building is too old. I know money is critical. There's probably not enough to go around. I appreciate this, and I also want to thank Speaker Teresa for fighting for us and getting some additional funding for some of the excess funds that have been found, but again, healthcare, education, and public safety, one, three huge things we can't take for granted. My family wants me not to continue in this role, especially my son. It takes time and energy away from them. They ask, why are you still doing this? It's basically a volunteer position as a member of the Board of Trustees. I tell them I only have a few more years until I retire, so let me finish what I want to do because as a member of the BOT, I believe GMH is so special. I believe in its mission, its people, and its patients. Thank you very much.
Sidozmasi, Dr. Borja. I want to thank you for being willing to accept this position again despite the objection of your family, especially in light of that, but, and you're, you're, had you pointed out how GMH is very special and it really needs us to, to help it, to see through some of the projects that they've begun and to support those who are, you know, winning us these awards, you know, nationwide, and really just to make sure that we get quality of care, the best quality that we can get. And so I'm, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. Do you believe that any of your continuing business interests pose a conflict for you to continue to serve on this Board?
No, I don't.
All right. So the statement of financial interest states there's no interest in any company?
Correct.
All right. And you mentioned earlier that you currently work for the GMH?
Yes, I'm an independent contractor.
Okay, my contract. All right. And do you feel like that poses any conflict for you in your role in the Board?
I do struggle with that, but I have made a point that anything that involves funding, especially to the independent contractors, to my position as a physician at the hospital, I will recuse myself of anything that comes up. I believe that I also know people that could help, and it's very hard for me to get people that I know socially or even family that could help in different positions at the hospital. So I prefer to keep that separate because this is where I go to work and I want to remain objective, but we are such a small community that we have to pick from a small pool of people in these positions that are needed at the hospital. So if there is a time, you know, I would gladly step down if it was something that would help a major part of the hospital.
All right. So you've been able, obviously, to balance your work and your work duties and your, at least attendance at the Board meetings. Do you have any issues with that?
Not at all. I'm actually very impressed. We've been able to hold a meeting every month and address critical issues that come up. So we have a really good group that we work with, and, and I think what I would like to see going forward, at least in the near term, is to strengthen our cybersecurity. I think that's a very big risk, patient and employee information. I think we are currently trying to find someone to head that position. We don't have that position filled, but we have reorganized the IT department to try to get someone to help us kind of tighten up our security. We've experienced other companies that we deal with, even in the private sector, like Change Healthcare, who is a clearinghouse between like a clinic and Medicare. They had a major cyber attack and it delayed, you know, processing of patient bills for months, and that kind of can cripple places of business. So security is one of my top worries, you know, going forward, as well as also trying to work on maybe getting the hospital accredited within a year or two. We are working, it does not necessarily mean joint commission, but it could be some of the affiliates from, that are affiliated with CMS, Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. So by doing that, by becoming certified or accredited, it helps us police ourselves, especially with patient care, and it helps them police us. So that's one of the big things I would like to, to have done in the next few years.
How do you believe you're currently, or GMH is currently performing within the CMS reviews that do occur?
We've had a few dings here and there, but we've been able to keep our certification with CMS, and that is through the act, action plans that we develop to address these citations. So if you've noticed in the last few years, we have not lost our certification, and, and it takes, it's a lot of work, but I believe in achieving accreditation, it will help us with our relationship with CMS, but we currently have a good relationship with them. They do get on our cases for things that they see deficient, and we have a certain amount of time to correct it, so we've done very well in that respect.
How does having accreditation help them police you or?
Because, for example, one of the accrediting bodies, CIHQ, since they, they kind of mimic what CMS requires us, so by satisfying their requirements to become accredited, accredited, it satisfies Medicare. So by having those two with similar requirements for the hospital monitor us and teach us how to monitor ourselves, I think it helps us with our relationship with Medicare. Therefore, we may not have as many dings.
All right. I think I read that you are also a professor at UOG, is that correct?
Oh, no.
No, oh, sorry. That's, that's Dr. Susan. I think that's you. All right, sorry. So, so to, to ensure that GMH is able to operate for the next five years while we build the new hospital, what do you think is the most important thing that we can do?
Well, thank you for asking, because I actually, someone very wise told me once, if you want to fix things, choose the top three things you want to fix. The top three things I would like to see done is to harden the envelope of the hospital, which we are currently out for, request for bids for the envelope of the hospital. I believe we need to make that facility safe. If something happens where an employee or a patient is hurt, I, I just don't want to get to that point. So that's probably one of the top. So hardening the envelope, which also includes replacing the chillers and replacing the HVAC system so that GMH and SNU will have the right temperatures and humidity, and that would help reduce our mold mitigation. That's number one. Number two, I think it behooves GMH to become accredited. Like I say, we're looking at CIHQ, which is more affordable and also affiliate of CMS. Again, this will help us police ourselves, and they police us as well, so getting accredited would be very helpful. The third thing, I believe, is to not get complacent or comfortable, and that also includes cybersecurity. When I, when we talked, previous operations administrator, we had an incident with the IT system and, you know, employee left, had resigned and left the hospital, but he still had access to the hospital programs, the CareView, which is our EHR, to everything within the hospital IT system. And I said, what is our process for separating from an employee? They said, well, bottom line is we didn't have a process. So I said, when we fire someone or someone quits, we need to disable their access into the hospital, we need to disable their login, we need to take them off our system. There's like a checklist, and then typically a company, and this is for private companies, but they will have an exit interview. So there's like this process that we should complete. There was a threat of a security breach, but we found out it wasn't a security breach, but things like that, I think we can't take that for granted. So that's number three, is protecting our information in this day that information and people can do so many things to hack a company or even an institution like a hospital.
Do you believe the things that the hospital did to win these awards that you named in your testimony continue?
Do you think we can continue it?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. We have some very talented nurses. When I see them in the hallway, I don't talk to them sometimes, some of these nurse leaders, but when I see them, I just say, thank you so much. I can't believe the stuff that you're doing. Like Ida, the other day, gave me a flu shot, and I said, Ida, I just can't believe you are where you are from where you were with us on the floor. I am so impressed, and I thank you, because we have now a Department of Infomatics, and these guys are just incredible. We have telemedicine capability. We, when we're short of doctors, we're able to admit patients and do tele ER visits, which is, it just keeps the hospital going. We have an incredible team of doctors. We work very well together, some employed by the hospital and some independent contractors. But I, like I say, the energy is very good right now, the morale is up, and the work that they do is pretty incredible. I feel like we can maintain and achieve these awards still in the future.
All right. As for the retention of nurses, do you believe there's something else that needs to be prioritized in order to do that?
Yeah, we actually made that a priority at the end of last year. It, the nurse, nurses item was, was going to be taken off the agenda, and I said, look, if we're hurting for nurses, why are we taking this off the agenda? It has to stay on the agenda. And there, there are a lot of good check and balance, because my counterpart, who's actually the co-chair of my committee, said, when we don't have the money to do things, we shouldn't do these things. And of course, a hospital has to operate within its own resources, but if we keep shortchanging the nurses, we will keep using travel nurses. So I said, I would like us to monitor and see what happens when we give these much-deserved raises to these nurses who have been there for so long or so short, but some are leaving. We bled out so many nurses over the last two years, but I said, let us give them what they need. GRMC pays their nurses this much, we pay the nurses this much. So can we, we don't have to match it. Can we get a little closer to try to retain our nurses? So they got the raise. Out of 40 nurses this year... Out of 40 nurses this year, we were able to retain 10 new nurses. We are also now reducing our number of travel nurses. So, we have a goal by so many months, we will have zero nurses, travel nurses, and we can't foresee any catastrophic events and we'll have to bring them back, but for now, we are at a point where we can wean away from the travel nurses.
All right. So, you, you serve on one subcommittee, the governance and bylaws, and you said that that project, well, the bylaws are redone and they've been adopted?
Yes.
All right. What were the biggest changes in the bylaws that you remember?
How we conduct our meetings, we, in the subcommittee level, you don't have to have a voting. You have different things that come through your committee that you would have to review, especially now we have legal with us quite a bit, which I appreciate. So, we no longer have to have the voting, but we do have to keep up with the strategic plan that was developed in the beginning of like two years ago, that we have these goals for ourselves and the, updating the bylaws was one of them. The other thing that changed was we had a team of different representatives throughout the hospital that wanted to work on changing and updating our vision. I don't have that handy, but we did update that and I feel like it does reflect what we are today. And the good thing about the bylaws is that for every subcommittee, they were able to give their input and outline who needs to be present at these meetings because that was not very clear in the original bylaws. Those are just some of the few things that we've changed.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to open it up now from my colleague, Senator Tytegwe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Lillian, how are you?
Good afternoon.
And to the nominee, Dr. Bura. You know, when you said that your family didn't want you, like the speaker had mentioned, now you've been serving two years. This reappointment is for six years. That's quite a long time for any board, I believe. The longest, I think, is six years. So, they do realize that it is six years, right? Not another two years.
Yes, that is why they are saying they do not want me to continue because it's for a term of six years.
Okay, so we're going to at least have you for another six years.
I hope so.
Because according to Lillian here, you know, she's, she just want to let you go. I could tell in her testimony that you've been very active and that's one of the hardest things, especially when it comes to deciding who sits on these boards, because we get a lot of people in front of us in the past and everything is like, oh, and thank you so much for serving and it, but nobody really asks them the hard questions. Are you going to do the work that it takes on this board?
Yeah.
Are you going to just sit back and let other board members do it? And they take your credit, you know, and it sounds to me from Lillian, it's that you're one of those workers and people look at you to, okay, I know she's, she's did her homework, so let's see how she votes on that. And, and that's just not fair to you. And you mentioned about the bylaws, that was part of your committee. Is there anything in the bylaws stating that in the event, there's a board member who just, you know, shows up for the sake of, you know, donuts or coffee, you know, and listening, that you can actually have them removed?
Attendance, I guess, is one issue, but I think we, luckily, we have, I mean, what is it, six members? Seven members now and everyone's very involved. I mean, Dr. Um, I mean Sharon Davis, I don't know if you know her, but she's a firecracker. I mean, she's in charge of capital improvement and IT and my counterpart, Sonia Selang, I mean, she.
Secretary, right?
She's a vice chair of governance and she checks me every step of the way because I say, well, we need money for this and she goes, well, we don't have it. And I said, well, we have to get it. We, we cannot have the floors flooded after typhoon, we cannot, we need money to do these things. So, she is the financial check on me every step of the way. Everyone's very involved and I, and I like the team that we have.
Okay, that's very good to hear. And I'd like to see more of the board actually come to public hearings too, when it has to deal with the hospital and advocating for the needs at the hospital. It's good to see the board members here and Lillian's always taking the grunt of it and taking the hits, but having her board members here in support of her, it, it just tells us that everybody's on the same page. You're not going in different directions, but you actually have a plan and that's really important. I remember from the very beginning, you always talked about the hospital, the way it's, the condition it is and now, and every time that there's a, a hearing, I've asked, okay, well, what's your plan for keeping the, the hospital going until a new hospital's coming? I mean, what's the steps other than just fixing the HVAC, just fixing the elevator? There should be a solid plan, just like an engineer does for building a building. Well, we need a solid plan moving forward, not just, we got to fix this and this. These are the steps along the way for the next six years. So, I appreciate you working on that and always tell every board member that, please look at what we can do today, you know, for, for our hospital, because sickness doesn't wait for five years or six years for a new hospital for them to go to. It's now. You, you touched on a nerve when it comes to cybersecurity. I've been a real, you know, advocate for it, pushing it, attending seminars on it and I think that, that's really true to form. I'm glad you brought that up, but there's also a thing called AI, you know, artificial intelligence that is pushing as quickly as how cybersecurity has been going. And we can't do any of these new technology unless we have one regulations in place. About 60% of all the laws that are being addressed in the states are actually failing. They're, they're not passing their, their legislature. Not sure it's because it's being lobbied by technical, uh, technology companies, you know, to just push it through, but I really think we need to look at the guidelines for AI. That's the next generation and without those guidelines, we can get in more trouble than what happened to us by moving with the technology and then cybersecurity just taking hold of us and choking us in the neck that we can't move forward, but especially for the hospital. This is not University of Guam or Dokomo. This is a hospital where I know that technology is used quite a bit, especially in the light of not having as many physicians as some areas do, technology, tech, telemedicine, they all play a vital role. So, I know that your committee oversees the bylaws, but since it's, and I see the passion in it and since you've already did your bylaws, I hope you can sit on that committee for cybersecurity and, and technology, because the more people we need to pay attention to, the most important, okay?
Yes.
AI, I'm sure you've heard of AI. Do you get involved, does, does the board get involved with contracts that are given to the hospital? You know, when in hot water, about in January was the whole issue of the MedHealth solution. I think of the accreditors. Does the board actually get involved with the hiring or the agreements with these contracts at the hospital?
I think the said department or committee that evaluates whether it's a contract for EHR or other contracts, the committee evaluates that. They do have the procurement process that they have to go through, but once the team finds, and you also have physician champions, nurse champions, support staff champions, all on this team evaluating a product, once they find the product, we're not involved on that level, but we are involved when it comes to, when this, like MedSphere or when the EHR is presented to us and this needs to be changed and we are looking for your approval, they do a full presentation on, and I came kind of like after that, but they did a full presentation on it, hiring this, and then based on the presentation, the board will say yay or nay, or let's table this because we need to study this further. That's the part where we do get involved.
Okay, that's, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
I know you get involved with giving authority for doctors to be at Guantanamo Hospital, you know, where they have, what's it called when they're given the ability to practice at the hospital or utilize a facility there?
Privileging.
Privileges, yeah. And that the board does get involved with that.
Yes.
Yeah, because I see it in your, your minutes of the meeting, you know, when I review it and, and every once in a while, I go to your minutes of meeting, if I don't make a board, you know, just look at the minutes. So, I appreciate it and I appreciate the transparency that, that you do to ensure that all these meetings are out there in the public so they can also understand what's going on with the hospital in true form. Because many times you're getting these media, you know, it's like, well, who's ever first to put it out there, that's supposed to be the truth and that's not the truth at all, you know? So, transparency is so important, it gets you out of hot water, you know, for sure.
Right.
To just be upfront. So, other than that, the speaker had so many good questions, you know, and again, I appreciate you stepping up to the plate and of course, my office is always open if there's anything I can do. Any questions you have or anything like that, I'll be happy to answer them for you as well and wish you the very best and please give a donkalusi to Smasi, to your family for allowing you to serve for another six years. Tell them thank you so much.
I will. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Tytegwe. Senator Seneklis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair. I feel at home, both of these nominees are graduate of Ocean View.
Yes. That's true. I didn't realize that.
And I, you know, my dad always, I asked my dad, why, why, why should the government run a hospital, you know? And he told me, he goes, because boy, when our people have nowhere to go, that's where they go, you know? And it's very critical that we, we maintain the hospital. But I wanted to ask you, how important is it for the government to stay in the business of being in a hos, of running a hospital now that we have another hospital, a private hospital? Could you, could you elaborate on that, please?
Sure. Thank you for asking that question. You know, under the Compact Impact Agreement, the federal government made this agreement and compact promise to the Federated States of Micronesia, to Palau, to the Marshall Islands, that they could come in and work, go to school and have the healthcare and the healthcare, I believe, was supposed to be given at naval hospital. It didn't end up that way. Everyone goes to GMH or people that go there, every single person, whether it's a self-paid patient or an insured patient, we treat everyone that crosses our doors and this really strained healthcare, public safety and education and we're still not there yet. For example, if you look at 2023, the cost of self-paid patients and most of these patients are not able to pay. So, that name is what my husband calls a misnomer. They are not able to pay and we will try to collect on it, but most likely, we won't collect the majority of it. And you can break it down by demographics as well, but when you have the Compact Impact Funding coming into Guam, you know, the last 10 years, because it's not now, I don't believe, but if we were due 37 million, we would get 11 million. So, we were never fully funded or we never got the payment to service the people that were coming in. And again, this is a portion only, it's not, not all, you know, from the Federate, the Micronesian Islands, whatever, but that's one of our challenges. So, the accounts receivable last year reached $270 million for self-pay and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I do know is I asked administration and the leaders, I said, how much does it cost to operate this hospital? Can you believe the number was very close to $270 million? Not exact, but in the same ballpark. So, that tells you right there, we have to be a government hospital because we are mandated to see every single patient. And so, now our hospital is actively taking advantage of grants that are out there. FEMA is helping, I mean, it'll be a long time before we get those funds, but when we do get those funds, we can use it. So, creative financing, grants, sometimes it's making something out of nothing and they do it and we see these patients. So, healthcare may be shortchanged by many different things, but the healthcare that we give the patients is not shortchanged. So, that's why it needs to remain as a government semi-autonomous agency.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. That's a wonderful answer.
Thank you.
I don't think there was a wrong answer, but that was a wonderful answer.
It was just an example.
Yes, ma'am. Now, now I, I'm, you know, I'm trying to understand, you know, based on what, you know, dad, dad was telling me and, and you, you, you said that it's, you know, it's true. There's a, there's another thing that I wanted to ask, how, you know, I, I've been up to the, to the hospital. I think I've visited the emergency room like three times this, within a year and I opted two of those times to just go to GMH, just to, just to see what's going on over there.
Right.
And, you know, in spite of all the, the, you know, the challenges, the staff still remain upbeat and very respectful, maybe because, you know, Santa was there or I don't know, but they were very, you know, they're really, really kind, generous and, and the, you know, I think they had a naval, naval doctor there, which was very surprising. That was wonderful to see, but, you know, in spite of all the challenges, you know, you, the morale seems to be, you know, okay. I didn't want Ms. Posades to stay there and not pick on her. My cousin, who worked at the hospital for many years, I don't know if you know her, Rachel, Rachel Sablon, she says, you better watch out for that, watch over Ms. Posades because she's, you know, she's a, she's a really wonderful person. She does her really fine job, you know, in spite of her challenges and she's doing a, you know, she's doing awesome job and she just retired like a, maybe a year ago or so, but she told me to watch over you and make sure that you're doing, you know, that you're, you're okay, right? And I, I, I think I have one more question for you, ma'am. What is, what, in, in your opinion, what is, how important is your role and, and what do you bring to the table?
You know, I also served on the board between 2006 and 2010 and I think being on the board back then, I was a little timid, but as I've gotten older, I'm not timid anymore and I remain advocate for the staff. So, for example, we have one of the communications department person who's been there for 15 years. He is still making $13 an hour. He doesn't only do communication, he's not just the operator. They do different notifications, they send out emails, they do many different things beyond just being an operator. And I said, we work at a hospital that is so challenged, it's stressful a lot and these guys still come to work. They smile, they say, good morning, Dr. Bora, I have so-and-so for you. And I say, thank you very much. And I am just amazed that they are staying at that hospital for $13 an hour. So, when we had the, I think it was a 22% raise, I said, yeah, what are you thinking? We are a hospital of educated people. We are all educated. Yes, we have housekeeping, we have communications, we have these different departments. They may not have a college degree, but they do important work. So, I'm not going to be bashful anymore. I am going to advocate for them and that really helped them. These people don't, some of these people struggle just to have the healthcare copay. Like what is that? We got to take care of our people so that we can continue to take care of our people.
Thank you. Very good, very good, yeah. Check, right there, look, check. Thank you for your, for your wonderful answer. You have my support. I, I, I've been doing my research, you know, regarding hospitals, especially state-run hospitals. We're not the only ones having this issue, it's nationwide. Most hospitals across the nation funded by the government, you know. Most hospitals across the nation funded by the government, you know, are experiencing challenges. And, you know, in spite of those, you're doing a wonderful job in spite of the criticism and everything. So I'd like to thank you both for showing up here today, and you have my support. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Ss. Masie, Senator Siniklis. I too want to thank you for your willingness and for your comments regarding GMH. That's pretty much exactly what I hear, too. People who've been either in the emergency room or admitted, they've, they talk so highly of the staff and the care that they received in most circumstances. There are a few exceptions, but I would say overall, 90% of the comments that I receive are praising the staff at GMH, really not praising the conditions of the facility and how long do we have to put up with that, right? So when it comes to financial management of GMH, do you believe the board is active enough, well-informed enough, and able to steer this financial management of this facility with adequate knowledge?
I think at this current time, finance is just catching up with the past years of billing and collections, and they have reorganized. They have really put everyone to the task of reporting our billings. They are looking at all of our billings, where we're deficient. They've been trying to reach a goal every month of collections. We definitely fall short because of the people, of course, that we can't collect from every month, which is a very common scenario. But recently, I asked, I think one of the things that I would like, having been on the Quality and Safety Committee on my previous term in 2006, I really am asking them to monitor the billing by department. You know, some doctors say, oh, you know, I ordered a CT scan, so I'm making money for the hospital. That's not true. You order a CT scan, we bill it, but how much do we pay the tech? How much do we pay the radiologist? So how much money are we really making off that CT scan? So we have asked finance, and they've been very responsive. And going forward, you know, before, we would get reporting on operating room, labor and delivery, and ER, radiology, those are the top, they were the top moneymakers back in 2006 to 2010. And we would know how much they were billing and how much we were collecting. So when things fall out in performance improvement, we get a report and say, this was not a good performing month. This is why. So we're not there yet, but that's where we're trying to get everybody to report the information so that we are aware and they are aware that we can help them solve some of these problems surrounding information that we need to have reported to us.
All right. So that's the billing, that's the revenue, right? What about the expenditure side? Do you think the board is able to help guide the hospital in this? So there are complaints that I receive in my office complaining about, used to be over the years, too much staff at GMH. That's why they can't balance. The second one was the sub-medical professionals are getting paid too high, they're getting paid for two or three jobs. Those are some complaints. Another issue is, oh, the contracts, of course, like the one that was audited. Does the board feel like you have a say in this type of thing to help them balance in that regard?
Yeah, so currently, our acting medical director is tasked with reviewing the contracts and reviewing the productivity of the doctors. So that is where we get involved. We are trying to look at productivity and base these contracts on what we need instead of just accumulating more independent contractors or paying out more, and we're not getting the productivity that we should be. The other thing, as far as expenditures, I think we have a better handle on what we're spending on. But the problem is, when we don't have enough for vendor payment, today, we need gloves. So if we go get a case of gloves today, it's more expensive than if we just did a bulk buy last month, but we didn't have the money to pay the vendors. So sometimes we get on credit hold, which makes our supplies a little more expensive. Right now, we have asked leadership to see about joining a group purchasing, supply purchasing group, so that we can join other hospitals within the U.S. and buy supplies that way. But just in general, if you can understand, the cost of supplies now has gone up, just like the cost of eggs and milk and bread. So we're faced with similar situation in medical supplies. So we are trying to work with joining a group purchasing organization where we can buy together, instead of purchasing last-minute stuff because we're on vendor hold. So that, we're trying to get a grip on that.
All right. Thank you. All right. There being no further questions and no further testimony, we will consider the reappointment of Teresa Demian Borja, DPM, FAC, FAS, to serve as a member, Allied Health Professionals Representative of the Guam Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees for a term of six years to be duly heard. Ss. Masie, time.
Thank you very much.
We're going to have an oversight hearing of GMH, supposed to be 3:00 p.m., but after this next confirmation hearing, if you're able to.
Yes.
Stay. All right. Thank you. We'll now call up the next nominee. Suzanne Lobotan, DNP, MN, RN, COHN-S, to serve as a member, Guam Nursing Association Representative of the Guam Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees for a term of six years from the date of confirmation. Dr. Lobotan is a nurse practitioner, also, and also U.S. Naval Hospital Occupational Health Supervisor and Program Manager. She was an adjunct nurse instructor at the University of Guam School of Nursing and Health Sciences, and was Take Care Insurance Company Senior Utilization Authorization Nurse Supervisor, and Dominion Nuclear Millstone Power Station Occupational Health Nurse, and a Medical Surgical Infectious Disease Unit Clinical Nurse in the past, and currently, I think, still at the U.S. Naval Hospital Occupational Health Supervisor and Program Manager. All right. Thank you again for accepting this appointment. Can I ask if there's anyone else who wishes to testify on this appointment? If you could please approach the table? We will hear from Lillian Posadas, CEO of GMH, first.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon again, Senator Telo and Senator Frank Blas and Senator Duane Siniklis. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, as well as our executive management and our employees, I truly support the appointment, the nomination of my colleague here, Suzanne Lobotan. I've known Suzanne as a nurse throughout our activities with Guam Nursing Association, and I know that she is very diligent and she's very committed to really pushing forward nursing standards, the practice of nursing throughout the, not just at the education, but also in the clinical setting, as well as our professional organization. And so I trust and I'm very confident that Suzanne will be very active in her role as a trustee to ensure that, you know, the hospital operates as efficiently and as effectively within the standards, particularly in our pursuit for CIHQ accreditation and maintaining our CMS certification. So, Madam Speaker, I fully support Mrs. Suzanne Lobotan to be a trustee member. Thank you.
Ss. Masie, CEO, Lillian Posadas. Ms. Lobotan, if you have any testimony for us today, you may proceed.
Hafadain, good afternoon. Speaker Theresa Stirlahi, and members of the Committee on Health, Land Justice, and Culture, and senators of the 37th Guam Legislature. My name is Suzanne Lobotan, and I am a registered nurse, born in Guam Memorial Hospital and raised on this beautiful island of Guam. I am from the southern village of Aggett, and a proud product of the Guam Public School System, a graduate of Ocean View High School, class of 1997. I attended the University of Washington in Seattle, where I earned my graduate nursing degree in community health nursing. This past May, I completed my doctorate degree in nursing practice from the Johns Hopkins University School of Nursing with a focus on primary care. And just three days ago, I became board certified as a family nurse practitioner with American Nurses Credentialing Center. The nursing profession, as a calling, resonates deeply with me. Like many others in the health care field, the basic reason we answer the call to nursing is simply to help others. For as long as I can remember, any spare time I had was filled with volunteerism. I remember volunteering with the American Red Cross in the village of Assin in the early 1990s, when I was a teenager, for post-typhoon recovery efforts. And that being the very first time in my life, I thought to myself that I want to be a nurse, so that I would be able to do much, much more, give back to the island community, and help others. This is also the reason I remain on Guam today. There is no doubt in my mind that one of my greatest decisions in life was to pursue nursing so that I may have the chance to affect change across populations. I had been a registered nurse for 16 years, 13 of which have been served as a Guam nurse. I served on the Guam Nurses Association's Board of Directors for nearly a decade. I also served on a hospital organization's Board of Directors for a two-year term. I hope that my leadership roles, experiences, and community services are a clear testament to my commitment and dedication to the nursing profession and to improving health care on our island. In the last decade, I held leadership roles that have contributed to my development and my subsequent desire to be able to do more for health care in Guam. So I was very humbled and honored to have been recommended for appointment to serve as a nurse representative member of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority's Board of Trustees. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank my nurse colleagues within the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners, the Guam Nurses Association, our Lieutenant Governor of Guam, Joshua Tenorio, and Governor of Guam, Honorable Lordus Leongaro, for their trust and support in me. My decision to accept this recommendation was not easy. I know that this role comes with great responsibility and will be very, very demanding of my time and my energy. And although in this moment, I acknowledge that I do not fully understand the gravity of this position, the challenges I will face, the difficult questions I should ask, and the hard-right decisions I must make, I am willing to learn what I must be smarter about, and I anticipate thoroughly applying the knowledge and the skills that I gained thus far in my career into this position. I'm confident that I will do my best with great honesty and integrity to fulfill the duties of this role. I thank you all for this opportunity to testify this afternoon. Pending any questions, that's all I have.
Ss. Masie. So you're currently a member of the Guam Nursing Association, and you'll be their rep on this Board of Trustees for GMH, and you're also on the Board of Nurse Examiners currently?
I serve as a nurse representative to Guam, a GBNA nurse representative to the Department of Labor, Workers' Compensation Commission.
Oh, okay.
And then I also serve, I am no longer a Director-at-Large for the Guam Nurses Association. I am chairpersons for a couple of committees on GNA, including the Bylaws Committee and the Recognition and Awards Committee.
All right. All right. I'd like to recognize at this time my colleagues who are here, beginning with Senator Telo Taitegui, Senator Duane Siniklis, Senator Frank Blas, Minority Leader, Senator Joanne Brown, who is the Vice Chair of the Committee on Health, and Senator Chris Barnett. Thank you, colleagues, for being here. All right. Well, I appreciate your willingness to serve on this board and in your testimony, explaining to us how you feel you can serve, so I very much appreciate that. And I do believe that because I have seen your work on other boards and in the Guam Nursing Association, and I know that you, you know, are very active in those and vocal and able to, I think, hold Guam Memorial Hospital accountable when necessary, help them when necessary, and do what's necessary. But what do you think the priorities for the Guam Nursing Association's representative on this board would be or are?
My role, I think, as a Guam Nurses representative would be to advocate for the staff of the hospital, for the nursing, nurse staffing, including retention and recruitment, and also the management of nurses, but not just the nurses, but also support staff. My role also would be to ensure that the facility is and infrastructure are a safe one, that's conducive to being able to provide quality health care for the people of Guam.
Thank you. Congratulations on recently earning your doctorate degree in nursing practice from Johns Hopkins. Very impressive, and I'm very proud. You make us all very proud. Your focus is on primary care. You continue to work at Naval Hospital. Do you feel like you'll be able to do this job in addition to all of your current responsibilities?
I understand that it will be challenging. Not that I would promote working full-time, having a daughter, and then going to school full-time, which is what I did for three years. As a matter of fact, my daughter was very excited. She's seven years old, and she said, okay, mommy is almost done, she's going to have time to play with me. And I said, yes, I'll be able to play with you. I actually did not speak to her about this, but I have stepped down from a leadership position with the Guam Nurses Association to be able to open up some of my time. I did not anticipate this recommendation for appointment, so I was looking forward to being able to breathe, considering that I had just completed my board certification Friday. But I understand that, you know, the reason for which I really, truly believe that I am here for a reason, being able to provide, you know, being able to be an advocate for our nursing community and health care on the island has always been a passion of mine. And I feel that this fell onto my lap because I can do it. And so with the support of my family, my friends, and my daughter, I really, truly believe that I'll be able to do my best to contribute to my role as a nurse rep on the board.
All right. GMH, as testified earlier, has been criticized for many things. Sometimes, people want to know, you know, what is the board's role in all of this? Are you going to be able to do, like, you know, hold the management of GMH accountable, at least to the board? Because if they're accountable to the board, they will be accountable to the public. Like, if they're able to answer all your questions, then it might be more reasonable that they answer all the questions for the public. And, you know, those are things I think everybody should vet and should know. But all of these are your colleagues in your work. Do you think you'd be able to do that?
I do acknowledge that it will be very, very difficult and challenging for me to be able to do that, but I also understand that that is one of the biggest roles and responsibilities of my position, which is to hold others accountable. Where I work, and even on the board as, on the GNA board, and also on the Department of Labor, Workers' Comp board, my job is to hold others accountable. And while it will be very uncomfortable, I am not afraid to do that. I know I will struggle, but I understand that that is my job.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to open it up now for questions from the panel of senators here. Senator Taitegui?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hafadain.
Hafadain.
It is Ocean View Middle, Ocean View School reunion here today.
Yes.
Both graduates from Ocean View. What's up about Ocean View? They might have a great science. They might have a great science, you know, class there, a great teacher there that inspired you two ladies that are here today to sit on this board and who are in the medical field. And I want to thank you so much. I mean, your job is a, you know, a very difficult job. It's very rewarding too, very much so. And appreciate you wanting to, the part where you said you want to stay home in Guam and provide your skills here, that already, you know, thank you for doing that. Because in your line of work, you can go anywhere you want right now, so I'm very grateful that you're here. And sitting on this board is not going to be easy, you know. There's many of us up here that look at Guam Memorial Hospital as our project to try and help become better, a better place for people to go to and then not be afraid to go to Guam Memorial Hospital because of the conditions. And that was a black cloud for the longest time over Guam Memorial Hospital. People were just, they were sick, but they didn't want to go there because they were afraid. And so, I'm hoping that your presence on this board, you'll be able to address those concerns. I know that your skill is nursing and everything that's, that comes with it, you know, to provide good advice on the board, but is there another subject matter within the hospital that you would like to look into and be a part of?
Yes.
And change?
I understand Dr. Damian Borja is already on bylaws. That's something that I feel like the governance and bylaws is a very powerful area because that's, everything falls out, that provides the guidance on how the board should run. But probably human resources, so being in my specialty, occupational health, employee health and safety, that is probably one area that interests me, aside from quality and safety.
Okay. That was good. It said you're at Naval Hospital. Are you working at Naval Hospital currently?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So, wow. I'd like to thank you. I know my other colleagues have other questions, so I'm not going to overtake this, but I appreciate you being here again and hopefully the questions that I had for Dr. Borja, you know, it also pertains to you two as well, so maybe you can think about, you know, AI along with cybersecurity because that's the route where we're going, but AI most especially, you know, something to look into.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much and thank your family too as well, allowing you to serve on this board and look forward to seeing what you can do for the people of Guam, but.
Thank you.
Thank you. And my door is always open. If there's anything I can do to help you or assist you in any way, please feel free. Or questions you may have, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Sisios Massi, Senator Taitegui, Senator Sinikolas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair. I know Suzanne personally. She graduated from Ocean View. I've seen her grow and achieve, you know, every milestone in her career, seen her grow. And I have no, no reservations. I think you're going to do a wonderful job as a, and I'm here to support you. And I know you have that Aggett grit in you, so you're, you know, and then that nursing thing about you with compassion and all, you got that toughness from Aggett, so you're going to be able to do the job fairly, compassionately, and I have so much faith in you. I do.
Thank you.
And you're, you work at the Naval Hospital. You're going to see some challenges, you know, that we face as a government hospital. The federal side, they just print money, you know, just keep on printing money. On the other side, it's not, it's not the same, you know, so. But I, my father passed away up at Naval Hospital and the compassion that they shown him, they showed to him when he was, when he was there, I'm pretty sure you know that and all that stuff. And I believe that you can bring some of that, you know, that knowledge and all that stuff to help GMH. The nurses up there at Naval Hospital were superb and just so compassionate, you know. So, I believe that you bring that quality of attention to the government side. So I'm so happy that you're here and I'm so happy that you've taken this, taken this up and are willing to serve our people in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sisios Massi, Senator Sinikolas, Minority Leader, Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. They call you doctor now? Dr. Lobaton?
Don't have to.
You know, you've earned it. You deserve it. So, doctor, okay? Doctor nurse.
Doctor nurse, yes.
Yeah, sometimes we want to say, sometimes we want our doctors to learn from the nurses, okay? Thank you very much for stepping up. Thank you. And I was just looking at your resume, your application, if you will, very impressive. And it looks like you're going to bring a lot of knowledge along with your skill sets into the board, and I truly appreciate this. Along those lines, I can ask, first off, I think the most important question is, does your daughter know that you're not going to have enough, any more playtime?
Not yet.
Oh, boy. I think she's watching right now. Okay, she out of school? That said, it's, and it's no secret, you're going to be, you're going to be faced with a monumental task, if you will, as a board member. Although, I think that you've, again, bring a wealth of knowledge, but also with the experience that you've had, I'm sure that you did some soul searching, you did some research on your own. What's going to make you hit the ground running? What challenge or what, what do you, what would you like to do as a member of the board?
The one thing that I feel, without fully knowing the runnings of the board currently, what I imagine is missing from the board is the accountability piece. That's huge, and I think that's the problem and/or the issue in many boards, not just a hospital board. Every single board I've been involved with is, the accountability is lacking and/or could be just improved upon. Whether attendance is an issue or participation or presenteeism is an issue, not just absenteeism, right? And so, I feel that I could be an advocate for that and asking the hard, hard right questions. Just coming from where I came from, I'm not really afraid to ask the hard questions and be the bad person. Although, I know it's different coming from a private side into a government side where with locals, but hey, I'm from Aggett, right?
I suggested you use that to your advantage, okay? And that's refreshing to hear because, you know, one of the major challenges of you, and it's not just endemic to GMH, it's through the nursing profession, not just on Guam, but basically throughout the world. We've got a nursing shortage, okay? How do you intend or what are some of your ideas as to how to be able to tackle, if not mitigate, some of those issues that we have with our nursing shortage?
So, so, being in, having relationships with organizations that can help retain nurses and/or create nurses. For example, with the Guam Nurses Association, we've been meeting with Fihoa and having discussions about how they could increase nursing recruitment and retention within the various agencies, not just Guam Memorial Hospital, but the agencies on Guam so that they can stay on island. And one of the interventions that we have been discussing are the nurse licensure, I'm sorry, the nursing scholarships and designating various agencies, whether it's private or public, as a facility that can qualify for nursing repayment and loan repayment programs. And we believe that if that is an offer for new hires or even incumbent nurses, then they'd more likely be able to decide on staying on island or staying within that organization. And then there's also paying our nurse faculty and staff competitive salaries compared, in comparison to the state side nurses, nursing faculty. And then that would help increase the size of our nurse, nursing classes and be able to produce more nurse graduates for our island.
Okay. I don't want to belabor anymore. I want you to hit the ground running. Okay? You've got a monumental task, okay? First one is when you go home, you tell your daughter, okay, that Lillian is going to keep you, okay, keep you busy, okay, as well as Dr. Demian back there, okay? So, I wanted to say thank you for stepping up, okay? And, you know, if you need any help, you know, get ahold of us, okay? Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Sisios Massi, Senator Blas, Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon to all of you for being here and certainly to our nominee. You certainly do have a number of credentials here that I see that our hospital can benefit from and also you currently have been at the Naval Hospital. We always know there's need for additional funding at GMH, but what has always concerned me over the years is how effectively the money's being spent. It's like education. We put an umbrella over it. We know it's a necessity and sometimes we don't scrutinize it to the level that we need to make sure that the money that's being provided is going where it's supposed to be going. How do you think your current work up at Naval Hospital maybe will be an asset, hopefully, to you and your review of the operations? I mean, of course, you're on the boards, you're not a manager, you're not there to run the day-to-day operations, but I'm sure you're going to see what you will see and things that will be more evident to you in your profession than the average person walking through GMH. How do you think that will be helpful to you, if at all?
I served on a hospital Board of Directors for two years and it was very repetitive where we actually met multiple times a week. And so, it was like clockwork. And I think that added to the accountability of various committees and departments within the hospital. So I think for me, it goes back to, again, holding others accountable, but also applying some of the strategies that we've had, just taking, not just at Naval Hospital, but at the various agencies I was, I have been employed at or experienced with, taking those and then applying it to what I learned from at GMH.
Well, we certainly look forward to that because, again, I think we all know there's a need to address those other issues at GMH. I mean, we understand the fiscal issues, you know, of course, the hospital's required to serve even those that are not able to pay, but we certainly want to have a certain standard of care that can be provided. I mean, those that can, you know, the, a lot of, we don't talk about it a lot often these days because the administration wants to build their hospital, but we still have GRMC, that's also our partner in healthcare. And we're hearing that they're pretty busy these days as well, that both hospitals are absorbing the needs in the community, the demand is there. I don't have much questions. I think you, I think you know what you need to do in your respective role and hopefully, you know, with your experience and your background, we hope you can contribute that because I think ultimately, we always want to see the improvement. Because when we need it, we're dependent on healthcare, it's a necessity for us. We may not need it today, but we may need it tomorrow, the next day, or a loved one or a family member. And, you know, how we measure the success of our community certainly is reflective of how well our healthcare is on Guam. And we know we have many challenges, but for the things we can provide here for our people, we certainly would like to see that. So I wish you well. As they say, you know, if you want to see someone do something, give it to a busy person because they just manage somehow, some way to juggle everything and are more successful sometimes. So I wish you well. It's the first time I've met you. Looking at your credentials are very, very impressive. I mean, you look like someone who's invested a lot of time and effort and work and contribution back to your community and coming back here, what a tremendous asset for us to have you. So, I wish you well. Thank you for taking up the opportunity because I know it's a challenging, challenging assignment, but sometimes you need people that are willing to be challenged to take these on, so good luck to you. Thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
You wanted to say something? Did you want to say something?
Uh.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sisios Massi, Vice Chair Brown, Senator Barnett.
Sisios Massi, Madam Chair, and I definitely like what I'm hearing. A lot of the good questions were taken up. The questions I wanted to ask were about, you know, holding management accountable and you said you would do that even if it was uncomfortable. You also said you don't mind being the bad person who asks the hard questions. I could definitely relate to that. But, you know, I would just say, anybody who can juggle the career that you have and the public service that you're engaged in, along with being a parent of a young kid, I think has what it takes to serve on a, on a board like this. I like that you're homegrown. I love that you're a daughter of the South. I also appreciate all of the different perspectives, from serving on the floor to being in the classroom to, you know, all the credentials that you have. And I think that the people of Guam will be very well-served with you in this capacity. So, Sisios Massi, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Sisios Massi, colleagues, and Dr. Lobaton, thank you very much again for your willingness to serve on this board and congratulations again on your, attaining your board certification for your doctor of nurse practitioner. I'm very happy, a thing that really very much helps address our critical shortage of health practitioners. And I think that I agree with the sentiments of my colleagues, that you look very well-equipped to serve on this board and to do a good job like Dr. Borja has been doing as well. I, before we leave, just can I ask, working at Naval Hospital, serving on GMH's board, do you see any potential conflict or anything like that?
At this time, I can't imagine of a conflict.
All right.
But if there was one, I would recuse myself.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not aware what that might be, but I know that we do, well, I guess, we'll see, right? Let us know. And I wanted to also just extend my condolences to your family and your in-laws for the passing of your.
Thank you.
Sisios Massi. All right. There being no additional testimony, the committee will consider the appointment of Suzanne D. Lobaton, DNP, MNRN, COHNS, to serve as a member, the Guam Nursing Association representative, with the Guam Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees for a term of six years from the date of confirmation duly heard. Sisios Massi, this hearing is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.